Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Norwich City Council's Scrutiny Committee on Thursday, the 21st of March 2024. And just before we begin, I just want to say apologies from Alex, who is normally here, and to thank Jackie, who is in the middle, well, hopefully not in the middle, but beyond that, of a very onerous day, and Leoni as well, who had an onerous yesterday and again today. So, thank you very much to them. Thank you. I don't think there are any apologies. I think everybody's here, which is great. Item two, can I ask if there are any declarations of interest? No declarations of interest. So, we move on to item three, which is the minutes. And we have two sets of minutes, minutes from the 1st of February and from the 29th of February. Are there any comments, or can we agree that they are correct record? All agreed?
Agreed.
We agree that they are correct record? And so, we'll move swiftly to item four, the Parks and Green Spaces Strategy for Norwich, and it's an update. And I believe, if I've got this right, that I'm asking councillor Giles to present. Is that right, councillor Giles?
Councillor Giles has got a presentation to present, but we can just drop it in here and give you a quick...
Okay, that's great. Do you want me to email it to you?
No, just...
Sorry, I sent it to Alex.
I'm so glad.
We have it in the...
I think this will work.
So, just a couple of minutes, and then we'll be there, moving on. Nearly good to go. Meanwhile, committee members can be formulating all their carefully worded questions and ensuring that there's no repetition, deviation, or any of the things, hesitation.
Oh, we can play it like that, yeah.
We could, yes, just a bit. Thank you. What about Simon Watt's slide show, Leoni?
Case work, isn't it?
Yes.
This is what went, what went back to top, you need to watch.
Okay, looking good.
Leoni's a genius.
Thank you. Thank you, Leoni. Thank you, councillor Giles.
Okay, yeah, quite useful, huh? So, this is progress report on the Parks and Green Spaces ten-year strategy. So, how, why, and what does it mean? So, a strategy, why have one? So, the Parks and Green Spaces strategic group quality and value by Parks and Green Spaces. And you could report there are over... That's a good one. And the data that we brought for us to be in the day. Government guidance suggests that you should have one. It's best practice to continue to emphasise the need for more strategic approach to green space management. Creating a vision. So, this is a vision statement we put together. And you might be keen to hear your thoughts on it. So, it's Norwich have a network of accessible, high-quality, and highly-valued parks and green spaces to be proud of, promoting sustainability, enhancing health and wellbeing, supporting biodiversity, protecting their heritage, and extensively contributing to the economic, social, and environmental aspirations of the city. So, that's the vision statement. What will it cover? A lot. I'm not going to go over every bullet point, but parks, community green spaces, green infrastructure, allotments, cemeteries, play areas, et cetera. And it will also highlight the following benefits of parks and green spaces. The social benefits and opportunities, including children's play, passive and active, both passive and active recreation, having a community and cultural focus, and educational resources. Health benefits and opportunities. And environmental benefits and opportunities. And that's to deal with opportunities for enhancing biodiversity, enhancing habitat, and... And the economic value of green spaces, which is one of them. So, consultation. So, we have a major football tournament in November. We had 120 attendees, 60 friends groups, community organisations, and external stakeholders. And the regulatory report has consulted on their emerging green strategy strategy. So, thinking about that, we're taking the... We're going to do this through the study, get them... And between now and June, we're sharing the draft strategy in the offices internally across various community councils. And if you want to define a draft strategy product in the future cabinet, and can that just be something that would be very much welcome. I appreciate being a member of the committee in May, and obviously, you yourselves as the committee set your work programme. And in terms of the consultation then, after it's gone to June cabinet, so we'll obviously use Get Talking Norwich, but also going to have a roadshow of onsite consultation events in communities around the city, in our own parks, in local community centres, et cetera. With the idea of guaranteeing as many consultations as possible, again, the widest variety of inputs. So, this slide illustrates where the Parks and Green Spaces strategy sits within the context of all of the other strategies that the council has. Clearly, it needs updating to reflect the new corporate plan that's been updated. Most of the strategies are in existence, but there are strategies which were set under this park strategy to be developed subsequent to this, such as a play strategy. So, auditing. So, Paul Roberts, who's our interim Parks and Green Spaces manager, who's unfortunately unwell today, has been, since he, over recent months, auditing the parks and green spaces in the city. Paul is new to Norwich, so he's been using a methodology, a national methodology, that's been used in other authorities. And he's trying to apply as mutually objective as possible to what we're seeing. So, looking at two indices, quality and value. So, what do these mean? So, quality relates to the range of facilities or features on site. So, it looks in fact as such as site accessibility, and safety and security, management and maintenance. And that's obviously looking at a snapshot of when sites visited that particular day. And the presence of planting trees, seeds, and other facilities. Value, and again, Paul is trying to be as objective as possible, but there's always an element of subjectivity with value. Looking at the contributions site makes to local immunity, recreation, health and wellbeing, biodiversity, cultural heritage, community, and other strategic objectives. So, why audit? To ascertain the quality and value inside, to evaluate the range of features, to identify features or characteristics from the site to be more quality, more value, to have a focus through developments or outcomes, and to identify those sites that the council... And so, identify those sites that actively provide investment to deliver protection, improvement, and... So, this is showing some images to illustrate what we mean. So, these are images taken from Wentworth Park. We've invested a significant amount in Wentworth Park over the last year, operating a large play area, a smaller play area, and we operate in this one. And on the left, it's still a park, you see that, it's used to offer in part. Perhaps a concrete better layout of a park might be a rather superstore than what's currently in the damage to the course. And on the right, you've got that's an old old pavilion from Lakenham Row, which is probably seen better days, to be honest. Other quality, the Mall Cross Gardens, you can see on the right where the perkins used to be. And overgrowth, which has now been cut back now, but really significant improvement in Mall Cross Gardens. Mall Cross Gardens, again, on the left, so that's one of the two pavilions, Everend. As you can see, it's not being used for anything currently, as you can see. And on the right, the Wentworth Park Shelter. We've got lots of heritage features like this in our parks, in green spaces across the city. And this is an opportunity to think about how we can utilise these efforts and how we can leave for a new investment to deliver what's necessary to determine the overall... So, are they assets, are they liabilities, or are they opportunities to effectively... For that. High-quality Eaton Park, so the beautiful pond there. Waterloo Park, longest free publicly accessible herbaceous border in Britain. Beautiful horticulture there, full-time gardens at Waterloo Park. Ketsites, and that's an example of a site that was in very poor condition, where residents have come in, set up a very active friends group with Matt's support, and positively transformed that space. And this is just showing some of the ancient woodland we've got in Norwich. And that's, you know, ancient woodlands will identify as a critical biodiversity character area in Norwich, despite all the tenuous steps necessary to preserve it. Old Life Wood, a bit like Ketsites, another site which was, which had some significant problems. A site which still has challenges, but I think it's an example of a site where when a local community takes an active interest in their local green space, when they maximise the digital use, that then helps to drive out ill use which might be going on. So, this is just an example. These don't relate to any specific parks, but you'll see the appendix of the report, the quality and order, the quality and value results for the main parks in the city. So, the quality audits carry out to give a clear view of how to develop our priorities. The development of the strategic green space hierarchy outlines the council's key priorities in regenerating parks and green spaces. An appendix to the new strategy will be an investment plan, setting out how much cost and potential funding sources we can draw on to deliver those costs. So, looking at establishing a strategic green space network, which sites need to be prioritised for investment, which need to be protected as well as enhanced through capital investment, as well as where sites need improved management and maintenance to be appropriate and achievable. Delivery. So, these are the principles within which the concrete actions will sit. So, looking at four key principles, which will form the headings of the chapters, as it were, in the action plan. So, the first of these is stewardship. And I've written, "As the elected representatives of the city, we will manage our parks and open spaces in the interests of the whole community. As steward, we owe them in trust, now and for future generations. We will seek to protect and preserve historic architectural and landscape heritage." The second of these principles is management. And this is an acknowledgement that we cannot do everything ourselves. We're not going to have the scale and quantity of gardeners and sellers which had at his disposal 100 years ago. There simply isn't the government funding for that. So, we need to work in partnership, work in partnership with friends groups, work in partnership with other stakeholders, other groups that connect capacity to how we can effectively manage our parks and open spaces. Need to look at increasing opportunities for volunteers to get involved. This already happens through friends groups, through Work Matt, as the Norwich Green Project. But look at opportunities for how that could be enhanced. Collaborations with major organisations, such as Norfolk Wildlife Trust, Norfolk County Garden Trust, we've got a lot of heritage parks in Norwich that require investment, and will require collaboration and consultation with the County Garden Trust in how we go about regenerating those particular parks. Building stronger relationships with funding bodies, Greater Norwich Growth Board, National Lottery Heritage Fund, Sports England, Arts Council, Historic England, and mother... And I think that really illustrates that when we're talking about management, we're also talking very much about funding and the challenge funding poses. Looking at how we can generate income. Sensitive commercialisation, that's a sensitive topic, needs to be done in consultation with local communities. Partnering with others, developing sub-management options. So, what does that mean? That doesn't mean we're going to hand over an entire park to a group of volunteers and ask them to go on. But it does mean that often, when friends groups take on flower beds, et cetera, in the park, they feel a greater sense of ownership and control over what happens in their local community. And often, that then creates a greater sense of civic pride, has lots of benefits for them yourselves. It means there's more legitimate use of the park. And while respecting the media uses and landscape heritage, looking at sensitive changes to management and resource regimes in order to enhance biodiversity. And as I said earlier, appendix to the strategy and action plan will be an investment fund. The third of these principles is use. So, ensuring our parks are available for use by all sections of the local community. Looking to maximise inclusivity, looking to work in partnership to design our crime and social behaviour. Looking at how we can be centers of civic and environmental education, community assets to celebrate our rich cultural diversity. And I've said, "We continue to invest in accessible and affordable play, sport, and recreation." And that's very much linked to one of the key outcomes from the new corporate plan. Recognising the vital role that parks play in combatting inequalities in health and wellbeing. For many people in our city, access to parks, play areas is likely physical activity and sport, labour, and for their families. And we need to be very mindful of that. And the last of the principles is environmental protection. Seeking opportunities to implement recommendations from the biodiversity baseline study. We've mentioned our key irreplaceable biodiversity character areas are Wentworth and Yere River Valleys, our Heathland and our ancient woodlands. Also, looking at enhancing biodiversity within our formal parks. Matt, I mean, well, it was not a formal park, but Matt has been planting meowacky forests at Hearts East Row, and he's been doing the same thing at both of Southern Park this morning. So, looking at installing wildlife ponds, wildflower meadows, and we've got those at Eaton and Waterloo, and I'm sure there are opportunities elsewhere. Orchards down the far end of Lakenham, Matt talked further about a group of wildlakenham taking on a site at the bottom of Peter Lane, which wasn't really getting much attention before. And how do we know that we're succeeding? So, the green flag award, the green flag criteria, how we continue to measure success. So, we've got three green flag awards in Norwich, Eaton, Waterloo, and also we're looking to expand upon those in the next year and coming years. Action plan, this will be the most important part of the strategy. These are just examples of actions, they're not, they're not a snapshot of actions from the actual draft action plan. Next stages. So, complete all the audits, that should be done by early April. Engaging in scrutiny, which we're doing today. Engaging with internal officers, as I've said, planning property, events and culture, sporting leisure, et cetera. Completing the first draft of the strategy. Bringing it to cabinet in June, and as I say, happy to bring it back to scrutiny before then, if the committee is so minded. External consultation, we talked about how we'll do that in July and August, with adoption process to cabinet in September. And then looking to deliver and leave the funding bid through National Lottery, through Greater Norwich Growth Board, from ASIL, AICIL, Section 106, and captive funding. Thank you for listening. I'm sorry I went on a long time. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. I think that was an excellent presentation. Can I just ask, before we go on to questions, Matt, did you want to add anything?
Not at this stage.
Not at this stage, okay, that's fine. So, on to questions, and I'll go to councillor Galvin first.
Thank you. Very good to see all that, those lovely pictures of parks, around us apart, thank you. I wanted to ask, what is that that's not ready on the board that you can't see now then? What's it waiting for? It's a shame that you can't see it now and get it done. It looks like it's pretty much ready, but also, how did it build on the history strategy from the past? Is that part of it as well? Maybe it's what happened when it comes back. It seems like we're pre-scrutinising something, we can't quite see it. It's interesting, but we can't get to the sort of detail until we see the actual...
So, the auditing hasn't been completed. So, over 100 sites have been audited, all of the, all of the parks, and... But only over 100 sites in total. However, every, and these green spaces, every play area, every allotment site is being audited. Unfortunately, that process hasn't been completed yet. In terms of drawing on previous strategies, because, well, I don't know about going through the hours of history, but in recent decades, Matt could correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we've had an overall Parks and Open Spaces strategy in Norwich up until now. We've got management plans for London and former parks, we've got management plans for all of the main sites that Matt mentions nationally. We haven't had an overarching strategy up to now. But as I've said, it is drawing on a number of corporate strategies and a lot of strategies that do exist in the councils. We have playing picture strategy that we adopted last year, obviously, biodiversity strategy. So, yeah, so the strategy will contain a detailed section which is linked into other existing council structures.
Thank you very much. I'll go to councillor Fox next.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask this sort of one quote from the strategy list or from this document. "There are hereditary green spaces deficiencies in the city. The 2007 Space Needs Assessment, although produced many years ago, indicated good provision of parks and gardens across the city." Well, that report's nearly 20 years old, so it's essentially to account for large population growth in the city, which has exceeded the national average of growth. And the population increase in Bangor Ford between 2011 and 2012 was considerable, of 700 to 710,000 people. And earlier, you know, in the slides, we saw the overuse, the effects of overuse. So, we've got that massive population increase, but there hasn't been, you know, really any sort of cycle increase in green space provided in Bangor since Castle created in the late 1990s, or 1994. And so, the pressure on chapel field and the existing green spaces is really high. Without adding new green spaces, you know, how are we going to kind of tackle that, really?
Thanks. So, overall, across the entire city, our quantity of parks and green spaces is high compared to other cities. How can I take on board what we're saying about the city centre and, you know, the growth in populations, as you said, we saw 100 years ago people moving out from the city centre to the suburbs, council estates, and, you know, we've seen people move back in recent generations. I think what will, once the audit has completed, it will be wrapped onto GIS mapping, which will enable us to see where there may be hypo-locatedized, lack, lack, and lack vision, hypo-locatedized areas. In terms of opportunities for new open spaces, they will, we have now got the biodiversity net game mandatory requirement on developers, and the garden slope that we've we do produce ourselves to assist developers with that. Obviously, the first priority is to get that, as you said, biodiversity net game on site. But the second option, if that's showing to be viable, is to provide credits to be delivered within the local area. And that may provide opportunities for the creation of new pocket parks. Obviously, there will be an emphasis on nature and because of the nature of funding what it's trying to achieve, but that will provide income opportunities. I think it will present opportunities for us to hold screen spaces in the areas that you all described. I don't think I can say more. I don't think... Brian, did you want to add any more on that?
I don't think so. The point that you raised about the city centre in particular, the retirement population increases, we can do what we've done and... We can do what we've done and over time, we have been able to increase. To a minor extent, the amount of open space that is provided within the city centre. We clearly have a few plans to try and increase more, and we've got plans to improve the open space. We do that, for instance, we're starting in Castle Gardens to improve the underperforming open space later in the summer to do that. But it is quite a hard thing to increase the absolute quantum of open space within the city centre particularly. But against the challenge, mate, it is really compared to most cities, publish that standards. The city as a whole is really, God bless, with its open space quantity as well as the quantity.
Because it's, well, it's so good for men or physical health for people to just even see green space. I want to create a youthful, valuable green space as well, when sort of, when open space is premium. You know, just encourage lots of creativity to.
Just valuable point, thank you.
Thank you for that, I think councillor Orsborn, you're next.
Thank you. One is, I've got a lot of these days and hazards aids, which is very blessed with that. So I guess my question is how those can be used, because, you know, tenants, you've got like franklins and things in there, and the green space, as you said, for various reasons, they'd actually take them down, out of safety reasons, basically. So I guess one question is how you can dispose, enable people to use those. So, for example, Matt's close friend, the nearest park is, is still a craft, is that, because Matt is ridiculous, except for kids. But they've got those great green space out there, so they could be using that. Another question, maybe, just very good ones, all right. As I said, if you could see in the circular presentation, you were sort of, you were, the park is accessible. Not all of them are at the moment, so there's, like, you can't get into some of them because they've got those, the exactly circular area buildings. They're technically not legal anymore, or shouldn't really be there at all. And the playground is also not, not a festival for disabled, means it's not always a playground that is, that is accessible for them. So, I'm sure those will be built here and streamed from the beginning.
So starting with the latter question, so we've completed the full inclusivity order of all of our play areas in the city, which we've carried back in the May autumn. Of course, we are, we have got one that has had to programme for new play areas in twenty eight playings over the next three years. And I think, you know, reflecting on the old policy set in the inclusivity order, that would then enable us to, you know, implement that in, in, in the programme. In terms of, sorry, I didn't answer that very well, but I think I've just. In terms of more broadly, I mean, yes, I mean, access, accessibility is something that's been looked at in broader audits of parks. Where there are issues such as you just described, that's been picked up on. The detailed audits over the site are very lengthy, going over, you know, every, every, every indices, directionally, really. So that would then provide an empty space for us across the city to know where, where, where are the accessibility problems? And where do you need to tackle them? Did you want to come back on that specifically?
Yeah, will inclusion coverage or others be involved now?
Yes, so normally, I mean, normally when we do play area upgrades, they, the designs get sent to Dragons, the Disability Real Action Group at Norfolk. And I've asked for them to be sent to send friendly Norwich. And they can absolutely be sent to inclusive Norwich as well. I know Dragons is the sort of the child and youth sort of option of that, as it were. We have had, we have had Dragons go around and look at some of our existing play areas and give their thoughts and ideas. And that was originally how we were going to approach fully inclusive play area. Given there is one that just wasn't viable, which is why we've got external results in there. But we have got some sites where that's happened. In terms of smaller need to bring spaces, I think that's a very valuable point. And I think that's been taken on board and discussed. And I think when we go out into local communities over the summer, that gives opportunity to speak with residents and ask what they'd like to see those small community areas useful.
Can I just pick up one small thing?
One small point, thank you.
You seem to be, you've been more of a parkal difference, a playground difference. Quite a lot of the playground at the moment is like, progress slides that are being stepped up to the progress slides to make the progress go up. Or you've got ones that are friendly progress and I have, but the slides are like too fast and too big for toddlers. So I guess it becomes uncomfortable, but when we do that, we're made for this, that it will not be appropriate for all of them.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thank you, I think councillor Carrington, did you have a point? Yes, go to you next.
Yeah, and on page twenty eight of the document, paragraph twenty seven, it does talk about trying to identify groups, park group. It also talks about engagement with children's families. I just wanted to find out more about how you tend to identify the park group and what forms you would take.
I think, I think what the difference in quantity of sponsors between the corporate plan and budget consultation strategy is, you know, you really have to be going out on site in communities and speaking to residents to get a broader cross-section of society represented in the consultation feedback, and I appreciate that's not always possible. But given the, given the interest, you know, reflected in the corporate plan, feedback in our parks, we think that's important to have that particular, this particular strategy. When we do play area upgrades, Rich and Susan are heart sick, so go out on site and not spend however many hours at the play area, talking to children, their parents, showing them actions of what play equipment could carry in, and asking for their thoughts on what they, what they can't see. And I think that's, that's really possible, so I think, you know, Rich is, you know, the voice of children certainly. Go onto Norwich City Council website to fill in the consultation forms. Sorry, I was saying, you're not really.
Councillor, thank you, thank you. Councillor Prinsley, I think you're next.
Thank you very much, thank you for your report, Adam, I really enjoyed the photographs in particular, which are quite brilliant. So I wanted, I wanted to ask you a little bit about cemeteries, which have been forced out of this. And it's to do with the fact that, I wonder about the solvency of the cemeteries in view of the fact that less and less people are choosing to be buried. So I wanted to ask you a little bit about that. I also, certainly, wanted to ask you a little bit about whether proper consideration is being given to sponsorship for the restoration of some of these parks. And I'm thinking particularly of the fountains at Eton Park, which haven't worked in hold of my memory of my time in Norwich, which is now already quite a long time. And I wonder whether that might be something that we could approach. For instance, I imagine if you went to Knock Cuts and said, how about you guys paying to get the fountains at Eton Park working? And have them as a sponsor thing, I think that would be really great. And the other thing I wanted to say is if somebody suggested to you that in one of your parks in Norwich you have a lido, where would you put it?
I'll say the last one last, because I was quick. On the second one, on commercialisation, yes, that obviously is a possibility. I think, you know, I think there will be, I mean, Eton will be some people over, over our closing parks. But it will be very funding to deliver, you know, projects like that, which we otherwise don't have the financial means to do. I think it'd be interesting as part of this consultation exercise to listen both to the excellent residents' views on, on that. And, and see, see where that aligns, as it were. Because, yeah, it's difficult to get balance, right? And I think it did do, it ought to do a sense to please, so it wasn't too garish, as it were, and exactising and, you know, undermining the physical appearance. In terms of, in terms of cemeteries, the cemeteries aren't wholly owned companies. They run in-house, you know, as, as in-house custodes. So there's no problem in terms of solvency. But we do, we do plan our cemeteries on the, on the, on the net expenditure rather than the net income. And that's not, that's not on colony for burials. We obviously don't own the curatorial of cemeteries that was leased out. And the big tax in nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty, yeah, one thousand nine hundred and fifty five. In terms of what we can do to address the problem, I think, you know, we have seen competition in recent years from, from green burial sites, Coney and Cossy. We haven't seen the increase in interest in including burials today in our own cemeteries. Sorry, we're still finding traditional burials far more popular, usually, yeah. Still far, far more common. What we have done is we've frozen, we've frozen green burial charges for the last three years to incentivise that as an option, because of the environmental benefits that brings, but also because, you know, offering something, something different that people might, people might want to pursue. Obviously, it's a very sensitive topic, cemeteries, and you have to be very careful about the language you say when you're talking about, talking about income. I think we also have to have cemeteries strategy sat below this parks and green spaces strategy. And I think we need to get understated funeral directors into roundtables, it'd be considerable and to engage them in a way that we haven't done to the same extent today. Because the funeral directors really act as the gatekeepers to helping, you know, choose between the burials or the cremations. Most people, most families, when they're in those difficult circumstances, they're constantly up there, they're, you know, they're, they're really struggling and they're definitely very dependent on, on standing packages put together by funeral directors. So I think we need to see that nation with funeral directors for our own, for our own cemeteries. In terms of the lido, I mean, once upon a time, there, there wasn't lido in Wentworth Park.
I know.
But, you know, clearly that would require massive investment and very difficult management. I know Exeter Shire Council have spent many, many years trying to get proof of outdoor lido back at the moment. And so, you know, running, running the case for it. I don't know if officers have any thoughts on that, like that, you know.
I have to say, I regret the passing of the one in Norwich, and took many a place scheme there, but that's another matter. According to me, we have councillor Carrington, no, not councillor Carrington, councillor Champion, followed by Lucy and councillor Fox, councillor Davis. And then I really think it would be very good, councillor Padda then, it would be very good if we could move into recommendations, bearing in mind that one of us at least has sat here for many hours. If we, no, no, I mean, it's really interesting and our parks are such an important part of our lives, we know they are. So councillor Champion.
Good reading, and I do report to the final question. And I guess I was interested in the consultation, as you talk about head talking and you imagine you're going to do a tour of the city. But in your references, you spoke about speaking to parents and showing them catalogs of play equipment. Would that be the nature of the consultation? Would that be, I guess my, my point I'm getting to is there would be many members of the community who might be using the park equipment because they haven't got new social partners, and it's predominantly dog walkers and young children. Whereas, I know there are teenagers in the area who, they've got no purpose, to be honest. But if there were adult exercise equipment, my own son would probably be down there to say, well, there's German membership, if that makes sense. But he's not going to be in the park. And so I'm wondering if there's other ways, if you're going to reach out to the community, maybe local schools, primary schools, high schools. You can ask for young people to interpret what they want, just like what their parents want. And you might find, you might get a broader input, because there's lots of research to say that gender disparities with use of parks, there's age disparities, there's preconceptions about use of park and you should be there and you shouldn't be there. And so I'm a little curious about the nature of the consultation and how you're proposing to go ahead with that. And we'll just encourage you to think maybe more broadly, to have a broader input, so that you're not just speaking to the choir, if that allows. Thank you. Last question, one statement.
I think, I think that's all very, very valuable, um, feedback input. And I think we can, we can, uh, and then we'll wait to do the consultation.
Thank you. I'm going to go to two people who have not yet spoken, so I'll go to councillor Padda and councillor Davis. And I, I know other people want to speak again, but, you know, it might be that your question would come out in a recommendation. So councillor Padda first, please.
Thank you. Thanks for the report and for the slide deck. Um, so I'm approaching this from an environmental justice perspective, which is my specialism. So, um, can I have some specific feedback, which I can give to you at, at another time? But what I really wanted to understand was, um, so firstly on the pictures, it's great, maybe it's very lighting, but does that accurately reflect Norwich open, um, space, green parks and green spaces in the winter? Because what we really want to do is have a strategy that invites people into parks and green spaces in the summer and in the winter. So what happens to those spaces in the winter? I think this, this to me suggests that it's a place for the summer. Um, um, I mean, also good to see the alignment between this strategy and policies, uh, and other strategies, so that's really good to see. I was wondering if there was any alignment between this strategy and inhabitants work on climate change, maybe a bit of nature-based approaches and natural capital. So all of those little kind of, um, elements that are really useful for strategies such as this. Um, I've also, um, wanted to kind of think about the framing. So the framing is a parks and green spaces strategy. But for me, we, we want to enable access. Uh, so access to me suggests a progressive strategy. It's what are we going to do to enable parks and green spaces for everybody, irrespective of, you know, background, um, gender, race, ability? So perhaps, you know, those reflections you can, um, can think about in the final version. And then these are all kind of the principles of founding principles of environmental justice. And, you know, you can move all those, those back twenty of them, not all of them will be relevant, but I can see parallels to model to design in. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I think we're moving into recommendations, but Adam, did, did you want to come back on that?
Uh, I, I, I mean, on the last point, um, and I don't know, it was mentioned by councillor Champion as well about disparities and different demographics in the usage of parks. And, and, you know, we, we nationally, you know, statistics suggest that male usage of parks is kind of the higher female usage. And obviously, given that we're all pioneering our council tax uh to parks, you know, everyone should have equal, uh, enjoyment out of them. So I think there does need to be much greater, uh, consultation, consideration of, of how our parks can be suited not just for men, but also taken into account of, uh, if you have demographics. Um, I mean, in, in terms of design, uh, so in terms of multi-use, um, I'm just giving an example, multi-use games areas, for example. Um, then, I know, uh, when it goes, been asked nationally why they're not using multi-use games areas. Uh, concerned about the only one entrance and exit into them. And concerned of potentially, you know, unfortunately being cornered if, if, if someone was going, you know, along the tent. Sorry, that sounds very Victorian, but, um, while, while, while they're in there, um, so perhaps the people with multiple exits and entrances, so that's just one example. Uh, also, also with those minority, um, I know, I know, um, Greg Rowley, our sporting commissioner, obviously, has done some work with uh sport and physical activity, signs of refugees in parks. And what we're finding, a lot of refugee families and families that have migrated from other, other, uh, sort of non-western countries, is they don't have that same culture for access, um, parks. And they, they think that they're those parks off them. Uh, and they, they, they don't actually realise they have one to go in for them using and enjoying, they think they must be for some wealthy family that must own it, et cetera. I know Waterloo Park, um, uh, park sanctuary, uh, in, in, in Norwich is looking to reach out to our communities to increase their, their usage of the park. Um, in, in terms of, um, nature-based approaches and natural happenstance, or, um, as the panel was saying about environmental justice now, I don't know if you had any particular thoughts or response to that? Sorry, it's a bit of a small.
And for me, it's been working with communities. Uh, the examples like on Warriburn, where we had really problems with the SP issues. And by working with communities, we were able to sort of resolve them. You have to keep going about supporting, so problems don't go away. And you have to change things as well. I think Weston Park is a good example, with, where there's massive issues with the SP issue down at Olden Derry. Um, and, and we're, which is our part of concern, is part of concern. And we went in last, last February and we knew problems, and, and, and a lot of planting engaged the community. Um, planted about, you know, front of trees in there, a lot of patchwork as well. We removed problems, really. I mean, it's no pleasant place, we talked about those. Um, it's much improved, so I think my message is, like, with the communities, to gather people on the ground, a lot of, I've also imparted able to plant in trees and a lot of little people, and it's empowering people to do things and giving opportunities and listening. Uh, so I can go on.
Yeah, I, can I just, I just want to say, I don't want, I'm, it's not criticism, I think it's freedom. I think this, this whole thing is, what you're doing is freedom.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I'm only going to take one more question, and that's from councillor Davis, who hasn't yet asked. And then we're going to move into recommendations, please.
Thank you, Jen, thank you, I think your presentation. Um, I just want to ask about the audits, um, and then the, what follows on from, from the, the audit. Um, so I see that obviously you've got quality and value, and then you've got different, um, uh, data bases, we do that. But how, um, how is that methodology actually, um, translated? Is it a breakdown of how each one's calculated as high value?
Yeah.
Low value? Um, is that something we could see, you know, that are there, are there certain bits that are important and others, um, in the breakdown? Um, and then on to how we move on using. The focus seems to be on page twenty four, um, on the high-quality, high-value parks, rather than spending money and having to look at lower-quality, low-value parks for better standard. Um, it says in paragraph twelve, page twenty four, the laws about their sites do not perform well, and they do not constantly add, although they might get several sites where this is actually, there's a clear policy of trying to give a strategy on how to treat these sites. We will look at enhancing the quality of many of these green spaces, if this, if this is possible to improve and enhance the value of them. So I, I want to know what, what that looks like, whether it's possible to enhance or improve the value, um, what's, what, what metrics for that? And also what happens to those sites if it turns out it's not possible to enhance the quality, um, and the value, um, of those green spaces? Thank you.
Uh, thanks. So, uh, uh, yeah, I'm, 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 well, might not be boring, but I mean, I need to get my laptop and go through the full spreadsheet formula, but yes, there is, uh, there is a range of factors that goes onto determining uh quality and value and the percentages of sub-section formulas, how it's all calculated. You know, it's, it's interesting, committing members and seeing that, and that, and that formula can be, as long as it's not copyrighted, I'll have to check possibly. Um, I, I, I would imagine that could probably be shared, because it was, it was interesting seeing how it's, uh, um, arrived at. Um, in terms of the emphasis on high-quality, high-value parks, um, I don't think that's the case. Um, I think the point, the purpose of the order is, is to highlight, you know, where, where there is, um, deficiencies and where those need to be addressed through investment. And I think in the investment plan, it would be a complex to the strategy. Um, it will be looking at, you know, what are the costs of addressing some of those efficiencies? What are the potential funding sources? Um, uh, in terms of, uh, meaning behind the, uh, last sentence of paragraph twelve, I think, um, I think that reflects, um, what funding bodies are saying now. So whereas, uh, in the past, if you have a, if you have a piece of, uh, crumbling heritage infrastructure in a park, you could just highlight, we've got this crumbling piece of heritage infrastructure. Uh, could we have, you know, X mode for it? Um, and then off you go, get on with it. I think what funding bodies, what, you know, funding bodies, you look at this heritage loss in funding, uh, their strategy, uh, and other funding bodies, they, they want to see, um, sustainability, quality of the process. Uh, they, they want to know that if they're going to, uh, invest money in, in delivering a sort of physical improvement project, that that is actually going to drive value for that level of community. There is a funds group, a community group, that's interested in taking an active role in that particular park. Uh, going towards that you are, you know, tackling the environmental sustainability, um, physical, social inclusion, et cetera. Um, so I think, you know, in the past, perhaps there was that division between enhancing quality and enhancing value. I think that's what that sentence refers to. In terms of, in terms of, you know, it, it would be obviously ideally, you know, you always want to be, you always want to be enhancing value. And you always want to be enhancing quality. Um, we've obviously got enormous amount of, of, of green spaces in Norwich. Um, and I think it's a reflection of the fact that within the funding, I suppose, we're not going to be able to do everything that we might do. And therefore, um, and therefore, you know, what we prioritize in terms of funding. But that doesn't mean, you know, disposing or not continuing to address sort of day-to-day relationship issues. In terms of big money, there, there, there's not going to be enough money to do everything we want in every park and green space in Norwich. That's just a reality that we're dealing with. And, uh, you know, that's all we're trying to affect and prioritize. Sorry, I'm, I'm not, uh.
No, thank you. I imagine that everybody here would be interested in you sharing the information as, I mean, would, would that be by email or would it be at the beginning of the next year?
As long as I'm getting copyright and formula, I, 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 you know, that'd be shared commitments.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I know that there are still questions, but I'm wondering if those questions could be converted into recommendations, so I think we should move into recommendations. I can see councillor Fox, councillor Galvin. Can I begin with councillor Fox with the recommendation, please?
Yeah, so, um, there's nothing in the report that you can see, like, all the, um, parts and spaces in, in carbon emissions and, like, the kind of, um, lower temperatures, the, the value they have in, in lower temperatures in actors, um, flood prevention. Um, so I would really like that sort of, um, cooling effect to be added as a metric. Um, so then for areas and for areas which are higher or the ratio of paving degrees base, um, doesn't, without risk for the parks to be prioritised in those areas.
Thank you. Um, councillor Galvin, are you giving a recommendation?
I can jot some down, different recommendations.
Yep, lovely. Okay.
So I can, I can refer to that, I think, six, but there, there are things that people already said, but one of them is, yeah. So one was that, really, if you fancy that, the cooling, also, um, vague gardens, it's very many gardens, um, for flooding as well in parks and firebreak. And so all of those initiation factors that the parks provide so well. And the other ones were, uh, um, including his Norwich, uh, Leon. So it could be, I think it is Norwich, it is one of the sort of first off consultations on things. Um, we have to come to scrutiny, I think, for the actual strategy to come to scrutiny, but it's, it would probably be glad to see the actual strategy. And I think, um, I mentioned that I can say that, yeah, if you serve as a volunteer, if that can be, we go to the new development, um, building, uh, small community areas. Um, you know, residents use small, small community areas in the States. And the last two recommendations, we get a very broad input, um, into the consultation, you know, beyond current uses, which is probably the point about, um, equity of use. And the last one, just occurred to me, it would be nice if all our parks are parks and sanctuaries, so, um, how would that process work in, in Norwich? It might need a particularly, um, keen lessons group, but if, if people could be worked with.
I think that would be a really interesting to know about and, and how it was arrived at. But also, as well as, um, the inclusive Norwich, you mentioned send, didn't you, the send?
Yes.
Which is quite dear to my heart, but, um, yeah, that, that would be good. Um, councillor Osborne, but thank you for that, councillor Galvin, for all your recommendations. And I hope, I've tried to jot them down, um, I know you have been, and I guess you have been as well, Jackie.
I have.
Lovely. Lovely, thank you. Councillor Osborne.
Yeah, I, I thought of, uh, housing lands, I just wanted to formulate, yeah, as a recommendation that, that when we are chatting, you know, in the summer, they include looking at how we can use that, the housing space.
Was it covered in my previous point? Yeah, I think the previous point, there's building in small amenity areas. Yeah, and it was in number six, I got that from number six, small amenity areas. Was that over and above the small amenity? Because, because it sort of comes into that, doesn't it? Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Councillor Fox.
Um, yeah, just, just, you know, like the world, you don't need to support it. Uh, residents who are wanting to increase, um, green space, want to put in boxes on, you know, put in boxes on payment on their phones, they're coming against barriers where they have to have liability insurance and they're not, you know, willing to do that. So I wonder if there's a way that we could work with Norfolk County Council to reduce those barriers and perhaps communicate with Norfolk County Council about proving, removing some of those barriers to, um, place in tree and planters where there is space, where people want to do it, where people are willing to manage those small gardens, but, um, it is about, it is about.
Councillor Davis.
Uh, thank you. Could we also add, um, recommendations, um, looking at the cost of, uh, changing places for this in the, in the larger parks and to back off, so on and on.
Thank you. Are there any other recommendations? Councillor Champion.
Well, a couple of years ago, um, council made quite a big notice about the rewilding of the rewilding of the parks. I presume that's going to be part of the consultation. Um, and will we be, can we include in recommendations that when we're talking to people, that we're also allowing the voter receive, because sometimes people, you know, they're going to lose the space that they're taking rewilding. So can we ensure that we are communicating effectively so that, um, ideas like that aren't squashed in favor of dog walker areas and aren't at parks? Thank you.
Councillor Fox.
That the, um, population increases looked at and the ratio of green space in wards, um, is, you know, is changed to reflect that increase in population and usage? Or potential usage?
Thank you. Any, any other recommendations? So, oh, councillor Prinsley.
I'd like to recommend that we consider investigating commercial sponsorship of some of these derelict park features, particularly in the fountain and eastern park. Get it working.
I have to say, other garden centres are available. I felt I had, had to put that in, because, you know, but yes, thank you. So I make that about thirteen recommendations, but they're like.
I can't remember them.
You had some, some discussion about, and some are within, I figured. And one of them is for the strategy to come back to scrutiny. You can, but you won't read my writers. Thank you ever so much, and, um, thank you councillor Giles and Matt for coming and so on and so forth, and, um, and for everybody's questions. So we will move on to.
Can I just, can I just add one more?
Yeah, yes, go for it.
Yeah, I wondered whether we could consider, um, adding, like, food crops, you know, more potential for food grown areas.
As part of replanting and so on and so forth.
Yes, for the green, green space, you know, we know people struggle with shortages and one way of dealing with that is, um, to give it more diversity and, and.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So we'll, we'll move to item five, which is the Love Norwich review. Now, I've probably lost the plot because I've written down that councillor Hampton is going to.
She's in, she's in the group room, I've just texted her to say that we're moving on, sorry.
So two-minute break then, and councillor Hampton will appear and, um,
This is well, this is for failure, and I know there's at least one point, panel officers would like to tie down after that. So this report is a review of Love Norwich, but with a focus especially on looking at progress again for recommendations this committee put forward a couple of years ago after the technical work is task finished, we did on lighting and access environmental antisocial behaviour and crime, I know you said you were committed involved in that crime, so that even that more than I do. There were some members who were much newer to it. So this, this report starts by going over some findings of that task and finish group, summarising what the data analysis showed. And although obviously this was a couple of years ago, I think the numbers here, it's still with a good picture of scale in Norwich where flooding tends to happen or wasn't revealed, so these four contexts have escaped the recommendations, but committed many at time. And we want to go through it one by one to feel a feel of what progress we've made in terms of this whole context when considering them. And as that section starts by saying, the main overarching development of this is the Centre for the London City Council's Love Norwich campaign, which firstly there were both practical steps to tackle lighting and these issues, but also also was on community engagement, so really step by these areas and try and keep, get that thing to buy into keep areas looking clean and actually go into the longer term as well. On the specific recommendations, again, I won't go through them in depth, I'll just highlight the key points and actions that have been taken in response to these or otherwise since then. So the first one touches on scrutiny recommendation, but we reviewed decisions made in 2007 to handle waste annuncies. As this says, we don't consider reinstating waste annuncies as a, as a long term solution, technically or no pay for it, legally. Although we have supported, for example, recent waste annunciation organised by businesses in the community. It's not said as any other local authority that was providing, but what this area does discuss is both waste collection options, as this is essentially an alternative to waste annuncies, it's a central item that's different ways of dealing with it. We prioritize in two areas, Sussex Square and we've gave you the error stages of Love Norwich, uh, by the food collection. Whether you like it or not, it's great, but it was quite time limited, possibly, so we didn't have items, we didn't have items. But we will continue looking at ways to take it forward and restructure it potentially. This act is an application made to the overall payment agency, proposed by the set of price up to six items and to make it more affordable. This wasn't as successful, unfortunately, but hopefully it shows that the approach we are taking to try and look for options to source funding to shoot this more into the future. On reviewing bins in the new areas, we have a new bin storage arrangements at some of our hotspots with tamper proof reverse union bins being stored at a number of locations as this take a kick. And we should total one hundred and seventy two when they're all completed. And this also says we file for the use of children's clothing at two hotspots in Netherden Grove and Duro Place, as well as reviewing flight of the signage across the board, and what we appropriate as a small new signs, which are included in the appendix at the back and giving it maybe more explicit residents leaving items in those really storied areas nearby is accounted for by the thing we have. On flight of the enforcement arrangements, extension to completely sort of CCTV, this is something we're moving forward with. There's been seventeen different investigations in the past year into flight of incidents. And I anticipate that the number of expanded notices we issue will go up in more post-CCTV instalment. We do six cameras with all month of monthly transmission capability at the locations listed here, as well as trying to use a twelve, twelve hours of running camera in a rural location in Norwich. This is a topic that we'll only use where there's a immediate intervention and specific concern in the city. I see how far we physically go there, it's not necessarily going to be most use of some time or resource otherwise. But so far there haven't been any flow of reported instances since its installation. And likewise, we deployed a CCTV camera on trial bases at Netherden Grove, which again brought a lot of incidents down to zero and as well as an over reduction of flight of the in the surrounding areas. So it's a really, really indication this approach is working. On point D, reviewing the maintenance of our quality and who we're working between citywide services and housing state management teams. A new one is the team that was started last summer to get the coordination and training these teams and also community engagement and backup with resources from data and communications teams. Come on to a bit more that back in a second under the data section, so get an idea of how that's going. But the indications again, so far this has been really positive, they've been targeting specific areas of the city doing immediate works, but also not doing how that lasts going forward. So on, just quickly to touch on using the app for walking flight of the, this is something we've been considering as we're starting to identify administrations, both of these public councils who have been using similar sources that your application team can't prioritize in the council website refresh project, so it's pause until that's completed and we come back to it at that point. And yeah, generally we are doing, first back to somewhere, visiting amazing public councils, including Newham, who work for previous rooms of deep and tiny structures, more locally, young, relevant, discussing enforcement and community engagement activities. And you also have opportunities to share the best factors through, and we should do a deep, really tidy and normal place partnership. This standard section poses far as talking a bit more about some of the other Love Norwich activities and how it's grown. Touching back on the community event at Sussex Square and T state, unfortunately, there is, um, day and, and residents will go to the day. So again, we design our approach to engage and follow events on the initial work in partnership with other organisations and events that are happening, which might be more around to residents and residents, helping to reach more people. And as mentioned, that opportunity, the Northern West partnership, there's a Love Norwich site, education store, should be positive. We also managed to run with the Love Norwich hub on Get Talking Norwich, which for those areas being targeted is an opportunity for residents to be indirect or by themselves, seeing the impact of that, or anything specifically, what issues there are. And for people that have them, also contains information of the fourteen different types of environments that are easy by applying for Love Norwich, which I will touch on further, and on practical things like organising community logistics. The final section here on performance, which goes over some of the data and how the shows we're doing. I know members offered as a moment of briefing on the data capability around flooding and environmental safety, which lots of people there were at and I think those who weren't, I think, ain't tackled that on each council since. But here presents data on citywide flight of the, flight of the award and a top ten flight of the locations. In there, I will hand over to officers, it says here about the spike and investigations were being carried out on that. And there is an update to give, which came to light after the papers were published, so we will go over that in a bit more detail. It's also, this is quantitative analysis of how the proactive approach of multi municipality has been going. There's been seven days up until so far with a hundred and forty five actions, two percent at time as we've brought them. Whereas we at least offer all of that since qualifications, that may have gone up a bit since then. On average, at the moment, there's been a twelve percent improvement in all its stores in these areas when they've been revisited, which is really positive. And there's photos in appendix two, I think, in this report showing some visual before and afters, the salt works that have been carried out. And those that have been completed on the whole are status effective and they're slightly measured, we would expect to be slightly longer term. So as well as the immediate improvements and deep cleaning and making these areas better in short term, again, there's a focus on engaging with communities at these locations, which will improve, get Norwich, uh, Love Norwich tackle. I took it from Norwich, Love Norwich tackle, to get that buying, to help keep these spaces looking nice and attractive and clean in the long term as well. And there's some information here about land, land or environment system, which we use to measure performance and energy cell in delivering environmental services and which also allows us to benchmark it in some of the terrible postal authorities the metrics that help us keep on track of cleanliness and track most of the area, the one that's sort of most contested around the nation, so we'll handle it for Adam in a bit to say what we would like on that. I will just flag up in the standard financial and resources section, it gives a little bit of context, that's something I know there's asked about previously, about the costs of the panels that have been procured and how many we were able to fill within budget. So I'll flag that in case anyone didn't see it, it wasn't in the substantive section. There's also an appendix with some of the questions that members raised previously. A lot of the answers have all been incorporated into this standard report too, and I'm sure that we'll be able to pick up in the discussion, so I won't go through those. Just to wrap up by saying, we know full well that the life of being in other environments, if you really can, have a big impact on neighbourhoods and people's quality of life, so this is still a priority for us going forward. We've been making progress, especially since May, there's been some especially positive developments for the satisfaction of modern amenity. And I'm sure there was a bath of cheering for these new cameras, increased enforcement, and the Love Norwich hub and grants. The only thing to do, we will continually take forward the loan from the pilots and work we've done so far, as well as finding opportunities to expand what we're able to do and carrying on those discussions with other power authorities and others who can help us share access, practice and provide our work even further. So thank you to officers and everyone who's involved in putting together this report, obviously in doing this wide work. I'm here today to help answer questions, but I'll leave it there.
Thank you very much. So it's over to officers, I think now, and obviously we've got that update as part of it, but thank you, Emma, thank you. Or is it over to Adam first? Sorry, Adam.
Thanks Caroline, there's obviously a significant overlap and I won't go over what Emma's already said. I won't miss them, but the penultimate paragraph on page forty one, sex hour walk grant, is issued today through Love Norwich. I think just want to highlight the bottom end of page forty five, top, top page forty six. Some positive developments in city ground management and performance. So in December, January, the reporting period compared to the October, November, and June period saw an eleven point zero two, eleven point zero two percent improvement in sites sorted in acceptable condition. And that was also a fifteen point three six percent improvement on the increase in September. In December and January, a hundred percent of sites were in acceptable condition for grass cutting. There was a thirteen point six four percent improvement in the H shop maintenance. Sixteen point two three percent improvement in park service, weed management. On, on the name of clear up city in the target areas, we've saved all of the UK SRF funding that was allocated for the project. We had a target of delivering seven or deliver eight by the end of March. And any with so far spent eleven thousand of the twenty five thousand Love Norwich grants of January opened about two or three weeks ago, and any leftover funding at the end of the financial year will be able to be carried over towards the new financial year. But I won't have any more, it goes with the best.
Thank you very much. An apology for missing you out and over to officers, please, thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight the fact that the data section of the report, so there's point thirteen and figure which was what started that kind of that and the number of instances a year on year, so from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty three. The present is in the book that I'm at, I've watched the report, we want to look at that sort of this kind of spike in two thousand and twenty two, which we all looked weird, an anomaly that to look into. So we're looking now at the results of that. So what it is is that it's still a data processing issue within Love Norwich, which is one of our systems, where we were getting the data from during that period from July to September twenty twenty two, is duplicating the reports, the instances that were in there, so it's causing that spike. So we've removed that from the data set, but now we can inspire reports, we've got some updated information, which I'll pass on for everybody that way. Just give me the update, maybe just year on year. What actually then does show is when we do, that's when it's been counted a year, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and extended increase in the number of reports that came in. One's kind of just keep, one has, doesn't affect the top ten locations in the report, and that data comes from a different system. But that's not affecting those top ten locations, they're the same. And also to keep one out of the session, they're looking at those tests for us, giving impact as well, they've got the correct data. Because again, that comes a lot of times in its right, it was just on the runway, we didn't put together any particular system, that's an issue, but yeah. Not great, pleased with that, so that's unnormally, and it's important that I say more on that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So just to, to, to be, any sort of increase, that's instead of the walking sort of increase, is that right?
That's correct, yeah. Just, just on that as well, is probably to point out, within the report you see the graph from under point fourteen. So when you start the point year on year, you can see that spike. Obviously removing that and changing that graph a little bit, but I think just to point out that probably towards the end of the year, in course three, financial year, and calendar year, so October to December, you did then see, that is correct, when you start to see the number of reports starting to be, starting to reduce towards the end of the year. And sort of just to highlight that, and if you can follow that.
Thank you. Councillor Osborne, can I just ask you, I, I think you might have had a question, a clarification question on headings. Would this be an appropriate moment for you to ask that question, do you think?
If I'm, sorry, we're page, from page forty two of the various graphs and charts, I'm just looking at. There seem to be more headings than there are graphs and charts. So quite hard to work out which applies to which, so for example, page forty three is like, each week one of the four graphs, and then underneath it, there's a chart of the table, and then five, February twenty twenty, February twenty four. I assume that's, that's the flight of the, well, there's quite a lot of more, more headings than there are charts.
Yeah, so probably the one that's underneath the chart is kind of the script of the chart about. about, and then the spot, um, lines of where it's been used, one of the more graphs, kind of heading for the overall power point, which we've, and they've gone to connect, sorry, sorry, that actually did.
Thank you very much. Um, can I ask, is there any questions from people? I can see councillor Davis and Carrington and Champion, I can see councillor Osborne again, um, I say that in the nicest possible way, um, and councillor Galvin, who've I missed? Okay, let's begin with councillor Davis, please.
Thank you, thank you, Emma and Adam. Um, I've got a few questions, but they're not very long, so I'll kind of roll them up as one. Um, so the waste damage study, this is kind of more of a, saving for the question. Um, the reason it didn't work is because it was act as every day, people were getting this written literally in before the council turned up. There was no fire number, residents booked, um, in an area of quite high digital exclusion where I think there was a couple of businesses by later. Um, residents had to get items onto the ground floor in flats, reflection, um, when they did book. Um, one resident in her eighties got something to carry for the walk through, and three people upstairs, and I'm just talking about one had doors, so it could be connected by council. So this was not, this was not clear at any stage to residents what they could and couldn't do. Um, it was very, very hastily organised, and they just wasn't clear path residents to it. It's basically saying to me, well, I need things taken down, I need these rooms, but I can't get them down by the stairs anyway. And if, if you're going to actually have a waste damage study, you do need mechanism for particularly older people to come water, as our class says, um, it is a new work. Um, the cameras, so the question about the cameras is, um, why wasn't the cost of procurement and installation known in the files? And why were they first employed in Nolan Grove when Nolan Grove has never been in the top five, it's been in the top ten a few times, but it's never been in the top five? Whereas South West Way has been first or second in fly tipping hotspots since they were, since they started being recorded. Um, so so why wasn't it in the highest um hotspot area, where it would have had the most impact? Um, because obviously it's had a very good impact in Nolan Grove. Um, and then the target areas don't match up towards the top five of the locations. So we've got Northfield down here, that's a target area. Northfield's appeared once in top ten in twenty twenty. And University Ward has like another side to be levels of all of the boards, so that's actually eleventh out of thirteen in the top. Um, so it makes no sense to me to have Northfield in there, um, when my hospital is consistently in there, but it doesn't seem, it's not in that target area list that we've got here. Um, and the tamper proof bins, um, they just go backwards. Now, I don't know if they're supposed to be locked or something, but literally people just go around the back and lift them up, the back, they haven't put a waist in them. So I'm not, I'm not sure if that's oversight or, um, yeah, if they're supposed to be locked, if they are, they're not, um, at the moment. So, um, yeah, that's everything, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'll try to work through them if I miss anything, just shopping.
Thank you.
Uh, the on the cameras, Nolan, Nolan Grove, um, this is just a trial, so we used an existing camera from the previous agency, so it wasn't kind of hours of stuff, so we left for a trial by H C four monitoring fly tipping exclusively. We thought, we may have a set period of time, they ran it for about four or five months, so we used that. We didn't want to put it in a line, um, known top location and then remove it, kind of thing, so I would look at something, probably for a better solution in that, so, um, to that, sort of, with that. Um, so waste damage, so what we've done is collection, um, totally make on board that, kind of having a trial of that, um, it was one set day, it didn't work, totally take that on board, and I think that's something for us, we're still kind of looking at how we can do something better with that. Um, so yeah, I mean, kind of, you're in, but I think that's an avenue as well, so kind of that enough. Um, on the target areas, which is, um, it's the the top ten in the target areas, we find in my work, we've been trying to kind of that, um, tend to cities, if you hear about, kind of, make sure that the, the lot gets spread across the city and not just too much in the city centre. There's one kind of chosen locations, sort of all all the way around the city. Um, and it's kind of tried, we've tried a different way of working with those areas as well, um, so what's the kind of, anything to do with that? Um, and on the tamper proof bins, I've, I've come out, I've looked, I know they're locked, so yeah, I'm just, that's very good from the other side, so we'll kind of take a look at that.
Can I just come back on that, Caroline?
Yes.
Can I just come back on the, on the target areas? Um, if, if we're looking at, some of the areas are still audit stores, we're detecting all these things, and we've got consistent top ten fly tipping spots, they should be the target areas. We shouldn't be saying, let's just spread it around the city where it's not needed. You know, if, if those areas where it's needed, that's where the source needs to go, not just spreading it around. You know, that's why we have data, we have data so we can, so we can use it effectively and clean up these, these spots or areas.
I think I see a recommendation there.
Sure.
Yes, councillor Giles.
Just want to highlight, obviously, fly tipping statistics span into determination of those areas, but we're also looking at other environmental problems and 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 graphics management stores as well. And so it wasn't, you know, the additional U K S B M testing that went in, any police issue operatives with N C S L, it wasn't exclusively about addressing fly tipping, clearly that's one significant problem, the other significant, um, environmental services problems as well, um, hedges and 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 shrubs that were overgrown, for example. Um, so there are a range of factors that we need to overlook in a proper place.
Thank you. Um, I'm trying to go down my list, and according to my list, it's councillor Carrington next. Thank you.
Thank you, I've got two questions, is that okay? Again, they are short.
If they're short.
Um, first of all is, is that, um, are there any potential measures which are being considered for pavement fly tipping? Because you can put CCTV up in areas where there's corners or bike through your bins, but for example, somewhere like Cat Road or Road to that Truson Road, Flaherty Road, Fort Park Road, a lot of the fly tipping is just all around that area, a lot of the pavement. Um, and also linked to that, potentially could, um, a deployable trail camera be tried somewhere around there and other areas? Um, and also as part of that, I just want to know, do housing officers and potentially other council offices are routinely reporting fly tipping? Because we seem to be very heavily reliant on residents reporting it in. My first question. Uh, my second question is, is has the council ever considered the use of underground bins, for example, in new developments? Um, I know they're used quite widely abroad, and I think there's a council not too far away where they've been used in a, in in a new, real residential area. And have that ever been looked into? Can I understand the evidence that that does go some way also to reducing, um, light tipping?
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I think there was a crossover between recommendations here and questions, but, um, who would like to respond to that?
I can just come in on the underground bins, uh, you know, I know line man's a particular approach with, um, that kind of, um, fully enclosed, kind of fenced off, gated, um, areas of community, which is much better than kind of what we see across our, our state. With the metro store that's kind of fully enclosed, there's, we just tried at Jero Place, uh, Nolan Grove, Crystal Place. Again, they're, I think they're a great solution, and they can look a lot better, they should reduce contamination of recycling, just because of the actions and they're kind of enclosed, that should help, but they are expensive. Um, so it's kind of, we need to kind of see how they work now that they're installed, see if they really do provide us that benefit, um, and then kind of assess whether we need to do that, roll things out like that a bit further. Um, yeah, underground as well, the underground, you can see that as well.
Thank you very much. Councillor Champion, you appear next on the list. Thank you.
Um, I was gonna tail back to the, um, the waste damage, the particular P gate when that, um, occurred. And I guess I'm just curious as to, um, like, you know, like, you talk about reliance, that you don't want to urge reliance on the council, and I just find that confusing because obviously people are reliant on the council to remove their urge. And so can you just explain that to me, that point about reliance? I can't find it on the paper.
Who, who would like to respond to that?
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just, um, as opposed to, I'm always, um, for anybody who want to kind of change behaviors long term, uh, by, 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 by free, uh, analyses, um, also there's a financial cost for us there, but also it probably won't, won't, it's getting like a change long term for people that are struggling to, to kind of end the reliance on councils to continually provide something for free. Um, this, something might not stay there for a long term, but our preference is to look at maybe the walk waste collection, so we need to look at the huge cost there for people, make that more affordable. So there's still something in terms of, it's, yeah, financially, we're not quite agree, but we are there making it more affordable for residents, if you do, um, that's actually our preference, I think, to my point.
Thank you. Um, councillor Osborne, if possible, one question? Thank you.
I need a more, a more question.
Two? Two questions, thank you.
Uh, firstly, just to pick up on what councillor Davis was saying, the, the standard was saying about not wanting focus on the city centre area, um, known target areas is the land suffering in the city centre, you know, not in Mancocks, and Mancocks probably the highest, um, area or, so, yeah, understand that about not wanting focus on the city centre overly, but this target, the city centre, please. Um, uh, the, sorry.
I said, so, yeah, the thoughts on that, it is in the six seventy four, so we can have a descent, so that is factors we take into consideration, in terms of when you, before addition, you start this.
Hmm, okay, it'll be interesting to see how that factors into the, the decision because there is, you know, there's a lot of fly tipping category based, um, and kind of those, uh, etcetera. Um, relatively, um, the, uh, I know the, the pressure is that we talk about, say, the B C C P at Normandy Tower, um, and other locations, those locations don't seem to match up with the data in here, so I'm, um, not sure how, uh, that, how this location's been cited. And related to that also then, because that has been referred to, to enforcement, and looking back a little bit more enforcement, I think there's been more pipe enforcement in the last year, is it more than that now?
Ten.
Ten, I guess, if I'm right, in the last year. Um, uh, because obviously it's still way, way below, um, other, uh, type of race, important rates for our councils, um, in, for example, not that high important rate. So as well as putting the CCTV in, can we make sure there's going to be enforcement? Because, you know, I've got tenants reporting stuff, and they send in all the details, they report it, they've got pictures on their phone, um, same type of reject, the CCTV, nothing happens.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Galvin.
Thank you. Um, I've got two things, but I'm trying to be sort of really quick with them. So firstly, so some of the residents in my ward have got the new metro store, full of bins, and that's like, was it? Yeah, I think you're going to do okay, so. Um, they're really smart, they're quite big, but they've got the bins in them, don't have lids anymore. So, um, in the summer, obviously, that's going to be really problematic because it's now come out, and also I've seen any rooming could easily get in. So I was to ask about those, and also if they are a trial, how are we testing what residents, um, think about them, has to be trial, or what kind of, what's the format for trial on those? And then the other one is the land system, which is really, really interesting to hear about land system, and how, um, how it measures the environmental services and success of them. I wanted to ask if councillors can have access to land, just for their areas, so that we can look in our own area, how things are going, how to train, and how to use it, please.
Who, who would like to respond to that, please?
Um, I'd kind of, if you want to go, I'll see, um, I was going to come on, as well as Adam.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, we take out more of the lids and enclosures. Um, initially it was, um, fit a waste tract, so that they, to get them into the enclosure, the lid needs to come up, so we've done that, but we actually think they now have a bit of certainty with it, so, uh, that's something we're going to be looking into this week to see if we can make it, and it's, but they're, uh, actually, so.
Yeah, how they're using the lid on them, because they've got like a spot, so you have to reach in, lift the lid, and then put it in, like, exactly.
Sorry, yeah, on the recycling containers, and so it's, they don't have chance of, they're on the general waste, at the end of the month. Yeah, um, we'll, we'll see how that goes in terms of the trial and kind of assessing that. We're going to look at, um, contamination rates, those distinct sites, uh, and actually give some indication of where it's been done. Um, and then councillor Osborne on, um, camera locations. So they are, although, it's something interesting, I've heard, we're at the top ten hotspots, top ten wooden house on, on Room Road, so where the hotspot locations come in, they are positioned by, so they don't need the exact, like, location where it's normally happening, but we know the road, the location, which is the process, and then that's where we're going to delegate in three, three offices and group ways of practice to see where they're frequently, I think the, the fly tipping is happening on that road.
So obviously, you're all raised by the long roads, um, uh, as opposed to a man of Martin, that's how we used to, perhaps, that none of us have ever really had that, um, on, on, on Nolan Grove, it's really active, as I sort of walk up all the way into Nolan Grove, so I'm, I was surprised to see Nolan Grove on there, you've got like cat grid basins and like the enclosures and first street etcetera as well. Um, and then, yes, certainly here, the, I just saw this one on the road, and there's also one this in, in Brooklyn here, called Mark Lane, um, which of, Mark Lane's next uh, road, so they're doing, by post, those sort of, assuming they're spreading cameras out, that doesn't really make sense, because you've got two cameras pretty much right next to each other, uh, as you know, as Jamie says, I like that.
Cameras not actively, but, yeah, so that, that was.
Those are new.
No trials, so that we have, we need safety for that, that's like, really, I think that's now removed with where that was, in the one on the main, so that, um, if, if I'm just, it would really help us have a clear, like, indication of how the camera locations are, because for years, I've been telling residents, report, 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 keep reporting, because that's how they're going to decide where the, where the cameras go. And now we're hearing that, actually, it's an issue of bins, and the number of reports doesn't necessarily mean what they are to get, get cameras. Um, yeah, the camera locations, the six, they're identified as, but they are in, in the hotspot areas, um, so, uh, Fars Avenue, this one going in there, P Gate, normally Farrow on Room Road, one sprint rank, uh, it's going far on Nolan Grove, um, so they, they all do appear within the top ten locations on the, on the daily, probably in the report. Um, so they are based on that, and then now specifically where the camera goes, we've sort of talked it through, and we've sort of learned where, been on that, got a vision of where, lots of the package. They are portable cameras as well, so they can be fixed there for the period of time to kind of see if they're working. If we need to move them, the data starts telling us that our hotspots are good, and we get a feedback saying, no, it's not happening there, it's happening here now. We can't move cameras, you know, it's not, not impossible.
Thank you. Now, I've got councillors Fox, Driver and Padda, and then we'll move to recommendations. So councillor Fox.
Uh, yeah, one more question, a question, I wonder if it's always worth communicating with councillors and boards as part of that process of allocation.
Thank you. Councillor Driver.
Yeah, I'll go too, uh, just quickly, uh,
Yeah, I've got two, uh, just quickly, uh, sort of, like, contacted councillors, really, we contacted the council in Lake of Road. All the officers came round, and, oh, come round, the, the, one day, the freezing cold. And any other thing I've been pointing down, or what was pointed down, all got done. And the moment the changes are done, the residents knew, as, well, I told them, I was, I was, I carried the city all stretch and to cover that, people were pulling me up, taking me back. Lewis and his team looked at that, they think, well, they're done, I don't know, so I know it worked, but that would be great to, to contact more councillors and, and walk around, and find out what areas there, what, 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 I mean, I just had those things, like, further apart, well, that's, a whole trees, you could see them further apart, you know, I just, I'm there a little further. Far over there, he said, I was still getting it. Well, that's the sort of point, you know, so, but they're clear, eh? The bushes are all, the trees are all, I mean, that sign is right up there, and there is, which is right down there. So those kind of things work. One other thing I want to know, if we ever caught of, or what were their moves, councillors, new sort of officers? It's maybe marked on mattresses, TVs, to say where they're sold from. So the shops all got their names on, and when you're going by your mattress, you haven't got to take it over on back, or you've got to have a reason, reason why. You want a new mattress, or a new bed, or a new TV or something, or, you know, because these, these things get dumped. Let's, let's get the manufacturers and the big shops and the companies to start paying us to move all this waste down in the city and stuff. Because when you approach and see a mattress laying there, or, or a TV, or something like this, when you go buy a TV, that, that, they think, well, I used to pull up, tell the licence people. Because you had to have a TV licence.
Still do.
Yeah. So I was just wondering what your boots are, I mean, have you talked to Bees, or anyone like that, to big businesses in the city, to start, I mean nodding to one another, to start with finding out, it's the same for dogs or Burger King or something, having their names on their wallets, stuff like that what they need, what they need to take away. If that's what we have more of, we'll definitely still be down to Burger King or something for them.
Who would like to respond to that, please?
That reminds me of my question on enforcement and any answers.
Sorry?
That reminds me of my question on whether there's going to be more enforcement than the amputations or the answer.
Ah, right. Let's go with both those points then, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, enforcement, any sort of risk enforcement. So yeah, we've improved this year, but we still need to improve that. Which is something that will borrow us out in the next financial year. We're going to be reviewing the F P S fixed payment charge amounts. Government last year gave a really valuable approach to increase the amount of charge by the business on fixed payments. So we will review that following, maybe sort of make an increase in the amount of charge. And then in terms of activity as well, I wouldn't find the data, it's all for enforcement as well. So help us do more.
Thank you. Who would like to come back on councillor Driver's?
The whole world.
Or if not, are we putting it forward as a recommendation?
I was going to say, in principle, it sounds, of course we want to, it's a lot of practicality, so I mean, council sounds as well. You've been doing some work, thinking about investments for this, it's something you've been discussing quite a long time into, so it's kind of on the radar.
It's a big, yeah. What do you think, I'm just going to put it up.
Thank you. So it could well be a recommendation in a minute. Councillor Patter?
Thank you.
Please.
Yeah, I agree with people, I mean, businesses should be hard to account. My question, verse two, page forty, section J. You referenced behavioural insight and behaviour training earlier in your when you were addressing the D S, and I wondered, with that in mind, I wondered, you know, what you meant by a statement, a sentence. We also have an active membership with Keep Britain Tidy providing our staff access to wealth resources and best practice network. My, I remember when I came across Keep Britain Tidy campaign when I was a child, and it was a national campaign, don't be a little bit, keep Britain Tidy. It resonated with so many people and it had so much traction. Now, over the years, Keep Britain Tidy have been criticised for not really engaging with people, by their much activity. So, either the wealth or the wealth resources that you have access to, is that about information regarding behavioural insight, is there a change? Thank you.
Yeah, just to bring that, I mentioned we've got, get our access to the board's board, so through that, all of the other members, the government, the authorities, across country, there's a kind of network, kind of forum, so people can ask questions. Those questions get pumped around to all the other members and then answers get provided, and it's a bit, how are we attempting to do such and such? Or, yeah, has anybody tried this? And then people have done those things, and feedback on lessons learned and that sort of thing. It's quite, it's really useful from that perspective, because people can instantly kind of check whether things work or not, so. In terms of change, the N U M study that I referenced in there, they knew in council one hour or four, but it part of Keep Britain Tidy on their best group program, various kinds of work, so some of the things that we're trying and have tried, kind of based on that learning from them, so. I'm just trying to give you an example from ahead, but the top of the areas, the use of invention work, something that they've done and saw benefit from. They've done a thing of the C S I caving, which we've just, last one, we've actually, we've been trying in a couple of areas. So there's that type of learning, that change that you can get from Keep Britain Tidy Network, which is my new store.
I'm confident that there are more questions, but I do believe the time has come to go for recommendations. Although councillor Thomas, I'm aware that you haven't yet asked a question in the meeting, so.
Be nice.
I think as it's your last meeting.
Oh, right, okay.
I think you should be allowed to ask a question, and then we'll go into recommendations.
Thank you. Well, actually, just focusing on the last question and the reference to the London Borough of Newham. I'm a welfare rights worker, so it's slightly different, but there was a focus on getting people off the unemployed register up in Nottinghamshire. And they increased the number of sanctions. I'm sure we all understand what that's about. The number of people unemployed went down, excluding the people who actually got jobs. And the people in the job centre are really quite chuffed about this figure, this metric. And reducing fly tipping, seems quite good, a good idea, reduce that, but you've got to ask, what's the fundamental issue? And it's about looking after people or dealing with the rubbish. The London Borough of Newham imposed these sanctions, and there was a correlation, I'm reluctant to call it positive correlation, between the reduced, well, the increased number of sanctions and the increase in burglaries. Not really positive, it's quite negative, but there was a correlation. And it's the same with the rubbish, we need to be dealing with the rubbish, rather than focusing on the fly tipping, we don't want fly tipping, it can also become deadly. But it's the rubbish, and it'd be nice if, unfortunately, there's an increase in recycling. But it's how you deal with that, and instead of just focusing on one metric, which might satisfy some people. But it's, the rubbish is there, but it's got rid of legitimately or illegitimately. But it's just referencing to the London Borough of Newham, which raised the question, what are these people doing then, if they're not getting benefits anymore? They're going to do something, and they've just had, burglaries went up at the same time in the borough. It's dealing with the real issue, is the rubbish.
Thank you. Would anybody like to come back and make an observation on that?
I was just going to say, I found a point, and I think it comes back to a little bit of obvious exceptions. We can't make people that horrible people, where else would they put that rubbish for their diet? So, yeah, I think that's something that we will continue to look at, to make an increase for really in that, so that there is an option to people, a realistic option. Yeah, why just get flighted or limited, so, yeah.
Thank you. Now, apologies to those who still have questions, but we will move into recommendations. I know there are recommendations, so I'll put councillor Galvin first, please.
Yeah, so that one from working with all councillors and wrapping into that allowing access to land and understanding of land would be my first one. The second one is asking residents what we think of those new stores, it worries me that they're expensive. There should be a lot of installing, and now we've got two days there, right, for community garden, right? And that's, I've noticed on in some of them, they'd be an absolute magnet for them, and then I don't think it's worked well. So I think should really work with communities to test out those new ones. It's going to be very costly to take you away again now, but I don't see, don't see how it works. Yeah, and one that came up, I think, that speaks a bit to his point, that might be doable to start with is to work more closely with local businesses. Because you get areas where you just get a lot of littering, busy, exactly where it's going from. So I don't know if our offices do go in the tall streets, but it's nice to say that these are wrappers that clearly come from local or whichever shop, I just see a lot of.
Some of them have got trouble out to be little pieces, but in finish.
So, yeah, working with councillors, explore working with local businesses.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Carrington, followed by councillor Champion.
Thank you. What if we can consider a recommendation, we should expect extending the search for best practice for waste and recycling dispersal to come best practice in other countries, which is also being implemented in some of the councils in this country.
Thank you. Councillor Champion.
I'd like to encourage further investigation into waste amnesties. I don't believe the investigations done thus far reflects the reality. And I think there could be further investigation there, as suggestion would be to consider that even if you had one, you know, one amnesty a year, you know, like a spring clean amnesty, you know, could, with enough notice, I think they would be widely used, and with a bit of optimism vision, wouldn't have to be abused.
Thank you. Councillor Osborne, followed by councillor Davis.
Yeah, on councillor Champion's point, I think the, you know, the one in your bird face approach, on the food really heavily used at the time. As a sense of these again, I would like to see a bit more detail on how the top ten locations and so on are selected, also connected to the national question, I'd like to see a breakdown of how that, on £20,000, not rich, project was spent and related to that, since there's top level outcomes here saying, would you redact it by the E F R? Or I'd like to see targets for those, so how much are we actually, how much are we actually in environmental and environmental danger? And how, what's the targets we have been committed for this, what are the options?
Thank you. Councillor Davis.
Thanks, I'd love to request that residents artists and texts in advance of any future innovation, rather than, you know, either a QR code which they can't access, or an email, which I was taking on to the.
Thank you. Oh, councillor Fox.
Yeah, I just wondered if it's worth, I know that the community payback teams have done some cleanups in some wards, but I wonder if it's worth putting more requests for community payback teams to do rededicating and communicate with all councillors about where those spots are that are just getting missed.
Thank you. Any other recommendations? No, that's great, thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you to Emma and Adam and officers for your patience and so on and so forth, thank you. So we'll move to item six, which is the scrutiny committee work programme report. Just before we look at the report, it was mentioned to me earlier about, and it's probably a relevant time to mention it, about topic forms for next year and when they should be in. And I don't know if anybody has an answer to that, because, thank you Emma so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't know if anyone has an answer, because I think they come in before the next civic year happens. Well, they must do, because there'll be a meeting in May, so do we know, or can we let people know?
Yes, no problem, Chair, thank you. If I can take the report first, and then I'll answer your question in.
Okay.
The report, before you start, is basically looking at the scrutiny committee recommendation tracker. It starts off with the last year, and it goes all the way up to February of this year. It's basically outlines all the areas and the topics that you have discussed and reviewed and made recommendations. So it's quite a helpful guide for members to look at and keep a record of. In relation to your question, I'm welcome, you're welcome to forward the topics that you wish to discuss, and we can put them as part of the forward planning. We are actually doing a document, I'm not, with all the, every single committee's forward planning. So if you have got any suggestions that you would like for the scrutiny, then please feel welcome to pass it on to myself or any of the committee officers.
So is that using the forms that were used last year, because people fill in forms?
I guess.
Is that using those forms, and are they available for people to access?
I guess if that's the process you follow, then yes, I can find out from the committee services, where the forms are circulated them again. Then members have got them, and they can just complete them accordingly. Just so you know, there is a monitoring of the email address that's been created for communications like that. So rather than communicating directly to committee officers and myself, there'll be a dedicated email address where those stuff will actually go in, and there'll be a tracker that will monitor that.
Councillor Galvin, thank you.
Are they planning for that, are they planning for those topic forms, or are all of you actually going up to?
I guess it needs a working document, forward planning is never a document that, as in many of you, if you want to add on to it, then yes, you very well can do so.
But presumably they would need to come to, they would, you know, the first meeting of scrutiny in the new civic year will be when topic forms are looked at. So they would need to be in at that point, wouldn't they? Oh, well before that point.
Yeah.
Two weeks before.
Yeah, they added that report. At the next, our first meeting in May, which I believe the twenty third of May. That item will be on there, and then any suggestion that you may maybe add to that, and then we'll keep that as a working document as we go along. We got the suggestions. Twenty third, I mean, the date should be confirmed anyway.
Date to be confirmed, I think, because we don't have the date yet, do we? So councillor Osborne, you wanted to make a point there.
Yeah, thanks, just to confirm that N S L, the N S L business plan will be on the weekly agenda for the next civic year, August twenty. On this year, they have reported on Tuesday, and we'll make sure that it's heard. And also a question on, I think, a budget scrutiny, councillors own ideas, certainly welcome. And scrutiny looking at how to ask, communicate and carry out consultations. Because obviously, we'll be trying to get on the load.
Yep, so that's two items, and presumably parks and green spaces coming in in the new year as well, when, you know, when it's updated again, would be on there. Councillor Davis.
Could I have a question, Shane and Rich, maybe to the minute, please?
Yep, thank you. Okay, thank you. Were there any comments about the tracker? The, any comments on that, or is that councillor Galvin?
I was going to say, thank you, thank you for it.
I think it's really helpful, and it just shows how much work has been done by everybody this year.
To ask about.
Which is, yes, councillor.
To ask about all the motions and stuff, I went to full council, and they refer to scrutiny here. Are they all well predicted? Have you ever met them with, or?
This is what happened with the, the communication with the council. So if I put on the work programme, then the committee, I suspect, I'm going to give those, where, and who did it.
I mean, I went to all at the end of the day, there was two big things coming from all of them, that I must really took care of.
Yep. But.
But we know what's happening, so that's all we, because what they are for.
But actually, as councillor Osborne said, I mean, we did have a meeting at the beginning of the scrutiny term when we looked at items, which were then, we came back to, and agreed, and we came back to the next meeting, and.
And to get rid of them.
There was a different set of items, so, I mean, it's by vote, isn't it? And this is what happened. So, thank you. Any other comments? Just switched myself off. Councillor Davis.
Hi, thanks, thank you Caroline, for being a fantastic choice for you, Steve.
Definitely, definitely, but you're not going, it's really kind of you to say that, because, you know, I've done my best and, you know, thank you. But we are not done, because we have item seven. And we know that councillor Prinsley has been to the N H O S meeting. Do you in ten words, no, more than ten words, do you want to sum up or say anything to us? Thank you.
I know it's late and it's dark and we're all hungry at this time. But I did go to the H O S meeting, which was a live meeting, and it discussed two matters. The first, which is quite controversial, was the closure of the A K surgery. And we had a presentation from Duncan Baker, who you may know as a member of Parliament for that district, who was speaking to us directly from the House of Commons. We also had presentations from a whole lot of doctors, all of whom are retired G Ps who work at that. We had no presentation whatsoever from the executive, these sort of G Ps, the health medical practices who want to close the A K surgery. And what I can tell you is that this mother of all the rags were going on about this. And the integrating care board people look as if they've been caught from the head hurts. And they're going to go away and have a meeting. There will be a public meeting on the seventh of May to determine whether or not this actually goes ahead. I have my doubts. I think they'll be encouraged to keep that surgery open. There was a long discussion about the difficulties access to the surgery. Because in fact, the whole medicine is not a halt, it's a high pain, and it's very difficult for people who live outside the halt to actually get to it. Including disabled, people who don't drive. So that was the first thing. Then there was a presentation by, there was a discussion about the debacle of the one Norwich practice, which you all know about. And there was a presentation from Emma Bug, who's the deputy director of the primary care network. And also a presentation from David White, who's the chief executive, who's known to me a little bit because he was pleased to be the chief executive and chairman of the North of Norwich. And as you know, there was a change of management because the previous organisation was described as not a growing concern. And David White has written a detailed report about this, which he presented. It turns out that the previous organisation didn't have sufficiently robust financial audit. And in fact, what happened is that the person who was presently the leader of the city council came in as a non-executive director for the voluntary sector. And in fact, was appointed as a non-executive finance director at the time. And managed to work out that there had been no proper financial audit of the organisation whatsoever. The doctors who were running it thought that there was an audit, but in fact, they were confusing financial audit with community audit. And there was no proper separation of the accounts between the organisation, which was supposed to be running the general practice of the walking centre, and the organisation called the primary care network, which was providing all the other services, which was in fact subsidising the general practice. So anyway, the long and short of it is that there was a seamless transfer to a completely new organisation, which was being run by the North Norfolk jinky practices, and the services for the patients, including the walking centre, have continued. Now, my observation is, on both of the matters that were discussed, is that putting doctors in charge of businesses doesn't work very well. And in fact, the problems which arisen in both places are really the result of asking doctors to run the finances of single services. And I think that was a lesson there. So that's my report.
Thank you very much, and there are two questions, I think. So councillor Galvin, you wanted to ask a question or make an observation?
Thank you, yeah, I watched the fourth meeting, so it's interesting, the report wasn't really extensive, because it was a two-page report. And it had a number of areas in it, actually, that people have written in to point out. The accounts were separated, actually, but they've emerged in the last couple of years. So I think I've had about eight whistleblowers so far that have got in touch with me, detailed accounts of things that were not on the actual practice. It wasn't doctors that were in charge, actually. It went wrong when doctors stopped being in charge, but that's another point, but. So it's a very complicated situation, what came through from the meeting today, that's a 1.4 million pound deficit still now, which has to be kicked up somewhere. And there's a worry that £500,000 of that would have to be kicked up by Norwich practices, so it's a really worrying situation. And I think it hasn't been adequately understood what actually did happen, and there does need to be an independent inquiry, which takes in the testimony of these many people that have been in touch, because it is patients that suffer at the end of the day. And it was a, it was a collapse that wasn't foreseen, and it was cataclysmic, and it was really problematic, and all that money's gone now, or it is on the negative balance. So I think the many people that have contacted me, the detailed accounts, their accounts need to go somewhere, they're all professionals. They've all worked within that area, they're all raising it because they're deeply concerned about it. And to have a two-page report from a person who's a director at it now is useful, but it's only a start, so I think it will come back, of course, I heard at the end, but there actually does need to be an independent inquiry that looks at the conflict and addresses what actually did happen. Yeah, so it's not so much a question, but your observation really was possibly useful.
Councillor Prinsley, you looked as though you wanted to say something.
Well, look, this whole matter is the subject of a meeting that could go on for a long time. And I sense that this is not actually the moment to do that. I do agree with you that there is much more to be said about what went on. And it may be that this committee itself will seek some independent scrutiny from experts about what had happened. I'm simply reporting what my view of what happened this morning.
Thank you. Councillor Osborne, I know you put your hand up, but are you happy to, or do you, do you have a quick point to make?
Yes.
Before we finish, thank you.
I'd like to know how the testing of the special clothes and staff was taken to answer the ad meeting this morning. It's, I think, the government's purpose, that a number of staff have come forwards, or former staff, and to bring a concern about the board specifically, about cultural, exotic culture, cultural rebellion, and financial mismanagement, including by the boards. They've raised concerns about conflict in the interest between the I C B and one Norwich. And particularly the fact that the I C B was giving money to one Norwich when they, when they knew that that was likely to happen. They've raised concerns about accountability of the former boards, and how questions put from those board members are being answered. And to read out, there's a good one, in one of the sources, regarding the fire pan is directed, this is yet proof that the processes at Norwich were appalling, company had a non-executive director, as a finance director, who isn't wholly employed in that role. The organisation is turning over upwards of £10 million, I understand, and if all is involved, isn't pressing, according to pressing transparently and openly.
Councillor Osborne, please do a close.
Ever learn what, and learn what ends from happening again. And that's the key question, how you can learn what ends from happening again, did not pull transparency and accountability.
Thank you. And maybe this is something that should be coming to scrutiny, as we say, councillor Prinsley, in the next civic year.
And I really was asked to simply give a report on what I observed happen this morning.
Yes, thank you.
What councillor Osborne has to say may or may not be the case, but this is not to discuss this morning.
No, yeah. Thank you for that, and can I just thank everybody for coming along? And Jackie, I'm going to thank you and Lea in particular.
And councillor Driver. You chaired the meeting today.
Oh, and councillor Driver, who chaired the meeting today. But thank you very much, everyone, and we'll close the meeting too, thank you.